My guest today is Munir Lynch. Munir is a candidate running for Columbus City School Board. On the Columbus City School Board, there are three folks right now who are not seeking reelection, which means there are three open seats. Munir and five others are hoping for one of those three seats. Munir came up in the Columbus City school system and he talks in this episode about how that impacted his views on life. And we also talk about what it's been like campaigning, what he hears from teachers, what he hears from parents, and what he even hears from kids who are still in the schools now. A quick note to that Munir will reference in this podcast is that this episode was recorded on Tuesday, just a few hours before the current board voted to remove the requirement for the district to bus high school students. And as just a disclaimer, I myself do not have a kid. And as I've noted on this podcast before, I'm a transplant, so I'm also not a product of the Columbus City Schools. But this didn't stop us from having a great conversation about his aspirations for the schools, what he hopes to see in the future, and even his favorite places to eat. All that and more on this Chronicle of the Columbus Chronicle. Munir, thank you so much for coming on the pod, sitting by on this, this fine evening. For people who don't know you, give that, give me the pitch. Who are you?
Yeah, I'm Munir Lynch. I am a health educator. I am a community organizer. I've been in this space since I was a teenager. Whether it's public education or reproductive freedoms or the districting in the state house. I've been around for a long time. I grew up with it with my dad, who was also a big organizer. And I'm a proud product of Columbus City Schools and I am running for Board of Education this year in November.
Let's, let's go all the way back then.
Yeah.
Growing up here, where did you grow up at and what were those early years like?
Yeah, so born and raised here in this lovely city. I'm a triplet, so two sisters and myself and-
That's wild. Yeah. I've never met a triplet. You are the first triplet.
Yeah, it's crazy because I've met so many other triplets and twins that I've just randomly encountered. But yeah, so we grew up together in sort of South Clintonville, old, what they call Old North. Back then it was just North Campus area. And we kind of outgrew the space a little bit with three growing up triplets and my parents. So we moved over to the east side in Berwick. And so from like eighth grade on, I was in, in that area. But it was amazing, growing up kind of in the Clintonville area. I went to Indianola for elementary, went to Dominion for middle school. And so I grew up around a lot of the same people. And then when I went to high school, I got to meet people from all walks of life, all corners of the city. And it's just a super, it's an amazing place to, to raise a family and super excited to be part of the future for sure.
Yeah, I want to get into the future. I have a lot of questions about kind of like your hopes, your looking ahead. But I would go back, you said your dad was an organizer and you grew up in that environment. What, what did he do? What was, what was that like?
Yeah, my dad was a librarian at the Ohio State University. And he was a little bit older generation than most parents of my, my generation. So he came up in like the sixties and seventies, really participating in like the anti-war movement. And I think his best friend being drafted and then a couple of weeks later killed in action in Vietnam, really kind of radicalized him into the political system. And so he always fought for what he believed in and what was right. And he took that to work with him back in the eighties and nineties at the OSU library. When LGBTQ plus people could not find work because of the AIDS epidemic, he hired a staff of queer folks and, you know, gave them an opportunity. And in my opinion, saved some lives in the process. And so he was always protesting. He always taught me like, never be comfortable. Always, always fight for something. There's always something worth fighting for. And so I grew up with those ideals and my mom is an immigrant from Morocco. So they met through one of their mutual friends who was in the Peace Corps in Morocco. So like you said, that degree of separation to Columbus.
Yeah.
There's a woman in Columbus who's hanging out in Morocco and introduces my, brings my mom back and introduces my parents. And, you know, as my mom, as an immigrant, kind of that story as well of finding your way here, especially just straight to Columbus, Ohio. So that all-American experience, you know, back in the eighties is a lot different from, from Morocco. So.
Yeah, I can, I can imagine. You, you mentioned like in high school, it just exposed, you said you- Correct, I, you correct me if I'm wrong, you said exposed you to so many different things. Talk to me about that. What was that like? Cause I imagine that ties into a lot of why you're doing what you're doing now.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. It's one of the biggest reasons why I am in this work and running this campaign is my upbringing in Columbus City Schools. And so when I went to Cause, I don't know, are you familiar with Cause, the high school?
I, I know, I have, I didn't go to Columbus City Schools. I, I was, I'm a transplant.
Okay.
To Columbus, but I, I know of Cause, yeah.
Okay. So Cause is a place where it's not a neighborhood school. You kind of have to apply, get into the lottery to get in. And it's very high rigorous academics. And so literally everyone across the district, if they, if they get in through the lottery, if they're interested in the school can come. And so I knew people whose parents were doctors or lawyers. And I knew people who didn't have a home to go to at the end of the day, you know? And when I got to college, being around a lot of suburbanites, a lot of people that went to private school and nice facilities around me everywhere, like it was a total culture shock. And I think one of the values of Columbus City Schools was understanding what it means to do a lot with a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you go through the school system and that kind of exposed you. What, what did you decide to do after school?
Yeah, that's an interesting path in itself. I mean, as the typical Muslim immigrant's child, I wanted to go to medical school and I was very dead set on, you know, I thought about going to the Naval Academy and taking that route to get there. I thought about so many different schools. My dad wanted me to be at like a liberal arts college and I wanted to do medical school. Did I really want to? I don't know. But eventually at one point, when I was in class, I went to the University of Cincinnati. So got to leave Columbus, but got to go home every couple of weekends or so. So, you know, went there and I was in the neuroscience pre-med track. And I one day was like, I don't know if this is, this fits. Like I still need to have that social justice, like be part of my day-to-day career. If we're going to be working so much of our life, so much of our time spent on a job, it might as well for me be something that I know my heart is in it. And so actually, real specific moment in college, I was taking a women's health class. And we watched a documentary about infant mortality in Ohio and how all the political systems basically crumbled. Any sense of safety that we had to prevent infant mortality? And just watching the impact of health from these political systems and social systems really fascinated me and really got me upset. So I was like, no, what can I do about this? And I talked to the professor and she was like, we have a whole field of study about the crossover between social justice and health, healthcare. So I took that route from that point on.
Yeah. And then you decided to come back to Columbus. What brought you back here?
Yeah, so my family wanting to be and just also loving it here. I knew I wanted to come back. I didn't want to go to the east coast, to the west coast. I am a huge cheerleader for Columbus. I want everybody to come here. It's such a special place and I knew I was coming back. You know, wanted to be near my family, wanted to be part of the city as it goes forward into the future. And I know that a lot of my strengths are really needed here right now. So there was no question about coming back home.
I love that. Then, so you get back here and what, what do you do? Like what, what does that route look like as a public health educator, like what you are doing now?
Yeah. So that's a good question because a lot of people, when I say health educator, they think about the gym teacher, the health class and, you know, so, but, and that is one route that you can take. But health educators are people who help people navigate the healthcare system in a more accessible way. Healthcare is really hard to navigate. It's really hard to get a lot of information from someone if you're suffering from chronic illness or if you're at risk of HIV and you need that information to protect your health and stay healthy. But it's not accessible to people. And so health educators are able to communicate what a lot of doctors can't do in normal terms and make it digestible for them. And so right after college, I actually worked on behalf of different organizations in the state house, advocating to our legislators to protect things like infant maternal mortality programs, a lot of reproductive health injustice. And so from that point, I then worked at the Health Department here in Columbus, doing drug and alcohol addiction services. And then I worked at Planned Parenthood of Greater Ohio, where I was in the schools, teaching all kinds of different health topics and emotional and relationships to mostly middle and high school students and mostly Columbus City Schools. So that really opened my eyes too of what the experience of the educator or the nurse or the counselor is in these buildings. And that was the route. I'm not working there anymore, but that was the, that was the route that I'm taking.
Yeah, that's, that is, it sounds like very important work. Cause like, as just like an adult with resources, like I get overwhelmed. You know what I mean? I can't imagine what that's like for, for, for someone who does not have the resources I do to, to get there.
Yeah.
Um, so was it going into those schools or was it like, how long had you been out of high school before you decided to run? Like how, what was that time period?
Yeah. I've worked as a volunteer or an organizer on different campaigns, whether it was, you know, Richard Cordray for governor when I was living in Cincinnati, you know, local city council campaigns here in Columbus. And, you know, when you're in campaign work, you kind of figure out where your niche is. Are you more of the organizing the spreadsheets and calendars guy, which is not me, by the way. Thank you to my team who does a lot of that for me. But, you know, I was always someone who was able to communicate a message and really put people's needs and hear them and communicate back to the candidate or the team and say, this is what the community is saying, you know, these are the stories that we're hearing. And here's how we can message around that. And, you know, I think it was on one of the city council campaigns I worked on in Cincinnati, where one of the staffers was like, you were kind of made to run for office someday. And I was like, absolutely not. I can't deal with the, the scrutiny of that. But I always had it in the back of my mind. And in the political moment today, it's a time where people like myself really have the opportunity to, to say, hey, things are not working. And so it's time to, to shake this up and to offer something new that people really, at least from my conversations across the city, really want right now.
Yeah. So was there like a specific moment or was it just your experience in Columbus City School? Like what was the, the defining thing that you're like, this is, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to run.
Yeah. Good question. Um, you know, it kind of brewed in me for a long time and just the growing frustration. When I was in high school, our, our school is the highest performing school academically. And yet we didn't have functioning heat. We didn't have air conditioning. We had a pest problem. And generations of kids that went to my school would go to the board and ask for the basics and just over and over again, like, no, like no matter what, we were able to thrive with all this. So we might as well keep it, you know, the same. And just this constant disappointment and constant, you know, we've trusted people with running this district and our academics haven't improved. Our facilities are crumbling. We can't figure out how to run transportation. And so something hasn't been working. And I said, you know what, like in this moment specifically, in this climate, I think it's a great time for someone like myself to step up in this way. And being a student and an educator here, you know, I, I heard that voice in my head and that perspective and was like, we need someone who can do this better.
Yeah. So you decided to do that. For people who don't know, how does the Columbus City School Board work? Like what powers does it have? What, what kind of jurisdiction does it have over things? Like I'd be really curious to know and I'm sure other people do as well.
Absolutely. That's a huge question that we get everywhere we go. It's what is a school board even? What do they do? The school board is sort of the legislative body of a school district. So they're able to create policies around certain ways that the district is run. They are also largely, a large part of their job is hiring, firing, assessing the performance of the superintendent, the treasurer, the auditor of the district, who are independent hired positions in high level leadership. And so the district holds them accountable to, to meeting the goals of the district. And then one of the most important parts, especially right now, is that the board manages the budget of the school district. And that's also kind of a legislative thing, like what our Congress or our state house would do in creating and managing the budget.
And in this election, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are three people who are leaving the board because it rotates, correct? If I'm, or I might be off on that.
So they, one cycle, there's four open seats. And then the next cycle, there's three. So right now there's three. The three people that were in those seats are all leaving, so they're not running for reelection. So no matter what, almost half of the school board is going to be brand new faces.
And there's six of you currently running.
Yeah. And in the primary, there was 10.
Yeah.
So if you can imagine being at those debates where you have a two-minute intro and there's 10 people, you know, I felt bad for the, for the audience.
Did 20 minutes in and you've just finished the intros. How, how was that process, that first round? Cause I imagine it's definitely a little more, I, I imagine it much more refined now. But in that first round, like what was that like with nine other people?
Yeah, it was a lot. I mean, first and foremost, school board here, at least in Franklin County or maybe Ohio, it's the race that requires the most. So you have to, you have to turn in signatures to get on the ballot. And school board is the, the position that has the most minimum required signatures. So for, for school board, I had to turn in 300 valid signatures, which doesn't sound like a lot in the grand scheme of Columbus. But, you know, somebody spells their street name wrong and their signature is thrown out. Their signature doesn't quite match the records thrown out. But just the process of getting on the ballot is a whole, whole thing. If I wanted to run for Congress, I only need 50 signatures, which is crazy to think about, you know? So there was that part. And then, you know, just trying to differentiate yourself from 10 people. And here in Columbus, you know, a lot of the candidates are going to be overall politically aligned. We don't have any like Moms for Liberty, uh, super conservative candidates on the ballot for school board. But you really have to differentiate yourself. And myself, as one of the youngest people who's run for that office, I really had to constantly tell people like, I know the deal. I know what I'm doing. Here's my plan. And it hasn't gotten any easier between 10 candidates or six. It's the same hard work.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, was that ever an issue? Were you getting a lot of that early on or people being like, oh, you don't know what you're doing? You're just, you know, was that you were getting that early on and you're, you're still getting that now? I imagine some, I imagine like with any person running, there's always people coming at them from, from some angle, but.
Yeah, look, I, schools are a very sensitive topic for people. These are people's children, right? And so you want to know that the person that's going to be in that seat can be trusted with their child's life, their education, their future success. And so when you see this young guy who's a little bit more relaxed than your typical politician, you can be skeptical and that's totally fair. And we've also had another young candidate, several years younger than I am, but another young person get elected who made some tough, questionable decisions with his position of leadership. And so I understand that. I think it's been a lot less of that now as I've been more out in the community and done all these debates and forums and podcasts and things where people can get to know me a little more. But it's definitely been something I've had to, to, you know, to deal with. And then one thing I'll say with that too is Sherrod Brown. Everybody knows Sherrod Brown. He was 23 years old when he was elected to the Ohio State House, you know? And he led in that position for 10 years. So when he left, he was only 33. So putting that into perspective, and he did a good job in that position.
So it's, so it sounds like the, all the, all the folks who are writing are kind of, I guess for lack of a better term, like different shades of blue, but all kind of, you know, they kind of, all kind of have the same ideology. How do you stand out in that group then? What, how do you come at that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I come at this with a community focused lens 100% of the way. You know, I'm a young guy relatively early in my career. I don't have, you know, the financial opportunities that some people might get from running for an office. And I really, you know, something that I think is unique about myself in comparison to, to my fellow candidates is I'm willing to seriously acknowledge that we are failing in so many ways. We are failing people. We are leaving people behind and there is harm that is being caused by this. It's not just, I'm better than this candidate. It's what we are doing right now is causing harm. And I'm willing to acknowledge that and to say, there is a completely different way that we can do these things that isn't so comfortable. That involves a lot of educating the community and a lot of listening. And I don't think we've had enough of that.
I guess in a sense, I'm kind of glad there's like a higher signature count, I guess, for people in that position. The more you talk about, it's like, oh, that makes sense. It seems like it's over some pretty important decisions.
Some people call it the worst job in Columbus, but.
Well, I can, I can imagine so. And I don't know how much we'll get into it, but I definitely like, you know, I, I don't have a kid and I, I don't have it. And when I, if we do, like definitely probably go to Columbus City Schools.
Great.
And just, but, but then again, it's like with everything going on, it's like, do I, is that what I'd want? Because like, you know, if, if, if we had kids by the time, you know, let's say like six, seven years from now when that happens, like are, what, what will that even look like? Well, because I know that they're facing, which is kind of what I, what I want to get to. I know like there's been issues, some controversy around the board. But one of the things I did see that, I kind of relating to that was they're facing a massive issue with the budget. I think it was somewhere in the term of 50 million.
50 million dollars a year. Yep.
Yeah. What, like, let's say you get into that role. What, what are the first steps that you kind of look at when you go, okay? So yeah, I'd love to hear from you on that.
Yeah. So actually today, they're going to release the initial recommendations for some of those cuts. And then in November, the superintendent has to present to the board what she believes are, are the priorities. What I'm going to do when we're looking at a $50 million budget cut is make sure that we have a plan in place before we even thought about these decisions. And that plan again, has to involve the community. We need to hear as much feedback from every neighborhood possible on what is working and what is not working. We have people that are hired by the district right now to look at data and to analyze the effectiveness of things we do. There can be expensive curricula that we have. There can be expensive program partnerships or business partnerships that our district has. And if we don't have the proof that this is working for us, that it is helping our kids grow and improve their education, then it has to go. And there's millions of dollars there in that alone. And so it also means, you know, understanding that the circumstances with the state and the way that they view public education, which is, they don't care. That we have to figure out how we can lean on our partners in City Hall, our partners in community organizations to help us fill the gaps and to help support us where we're going to need it the most.
For, for someone who goes, you know, maybe it's not super in tune with how education dollars work and how they're allotted, and you say the state doesn't care about public education. What do you mean by that? Like go into detail.
Great question. So in Ohio, we are, in our constitution, we are legally obligated to fund a public education system. It has to be a substantial part of the line item budget of the state of Ohio. For years and years, it has been ruled that our state school funding structure is unconstitutional because we are not adequately funding a public school system. Doesn't have to be just Columbus. It's rural districts, it's county districts, it's other big cities in the state. And so first and foremost, our funding structure is unconstitutional to begin with. And then you have things like in the most recent state budget, where we're allocating so many dollars to private school vouchers that a majority of the recipients already were paying tuition for their kid. They were already in a financial position to go to private school without the government's help. And now we're helping them out. It's things like we are legally required as a public school district to provide transportation to private school and charter school kids that don't go to Columbus City Schools. And we're here in Franklinton where 65% of school-aged kids are not enrolled in CCS. They're enrolled in a private school, an area charter school. And those are all because of, you know, the state strangling public school districts out of every dollar that they have left. And it's out of the city and the school, school boards that we've had that haven't viewed this neighborhood as the opportunity zone that it is now. So.
So you mentioned, I want to note today's, we'll probably put this out later this week. So today's Tuesday, the seventh, I can't remember. Yeah, Tuesday the seventh. So we'll, we'll know these recommendations by the time this comes out. On that list, what would be things that you are, like if they were, like, what would be things on that list that you'd be really frustrated or like want off that list? If there was something, like what are the things that you are advocating to keep versus cut?
Yeah. The big hot button issue is transportation in general. But one of the recommendations is to cut busing for high school students. That doesn't work. That's not going to work well for our district. We're going to see a complete backlash of that. We're going to see really bad effects of that. We have over a 52% chronic absenteeism rate. Our academic outcomes for high school students are worse than elementary and middle school students. And so as kids age in the Columbus City School District, their academic outcomes go down. And so removing their busing in the name of saving money. You know, in Ohio, you're not legally required to transport high school students. But it's something we do because we're a very impoverished school district. You know, we're a huge geographical area with a pretty slow public transit system. And so being able to make sure kids have a way to get to school. I mean, we have a 52% chronic absenteeism rate. How is eliminating someone's way to get to school going to help? And so I'm very against that. And I've had meetings with people within the school district and other board members and superintendent staffers about how concerned I am with that. And I believe that's something I expect to see in, in recommendations for the budget.
So you mentioned some of the thing, I think at a, at a high level, some of the partnerships that you like, that maybe would get cut. Like what else, like in your mind, if they, if there has to be cuts, like what are you thinking? Like these are the, the things that I think we should start with. And you kind of hit on them a little bit, but kind of go into detail if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I'm just going to say this straight up because I get a lot of questions about this. I don't believe that closing schools is the end-all be-all solution, but I do acknowledge the reality that we're going to have to close some schools. There are buildings that are underutilized, buildings that are in bad shape that we just can't afford to, to rehab. And there's things that we've done with previous buildings that have financially benefited the district, like leasing them out to other organizations. Or we want to keep our assets as much as we can, but if that is costing us, it's just the way that we make those school closure decisions that we failed the community on. I could talk for a whole nother hour about just that process. But I wanted to start by saying, this is not something, I want to be very honest. This is not something that, even though it's, it's hard for me, I'm not going to tell the community, we're not going to close any schools because we're going to have to. You know, we have to think about the administration, you know? We have a lot of high paid positions, not sure who's benefiting what here and there. But I also want to say, that's not going to be $50 million. If we cut out 10 people who make 200 grand a year, you know, that's not going to solve the future problems that we have down the line. And so, you know, those are things I'm, I'm concerned with. And I think there are other things that we can invest in, like green infrastructure for our schools. We just passed a safe green schools initiative. We just passed a safe green schools initiative that might cost money to set up, or we have to seek money out from grants. But they're gonna save us money in the long run as far as saving on energy costs, saving on the upkeep of of buildings when they have more efficient HVAC, things like that. So, yeah.
Right now, when you're when you're looking ahead and you're talking with the people, what are the main issues that are coming up? Obviously, I assume the financing of the, but like, what are you hearing from the people who you're talking with?
Yeah, I'm hearing from the people something that you've shared with me, which is either I have a kid or I, you know, it's in my future plans and I want to send them to Columbus City Schools, but I don't know if I would feel comfortable doing that. Or I don't know if they're gonna get the best product that they possibly can. And that's a story that I've heard a lot. I've heard a lot about people's kids really struggling to get through school here, especially with the social delays that everybody's experiencing from the pandemic and just the academic performance, the safety in our buildings. You know, the attendance rate, these are all things that people are very concerned about. And at the end of the day, again, these are our community's kids. This is our future. And everybody agrees that we want the best for our children. We want the best for our future generations. And when we notice that they're not getting everything they need as far as support services, that they're years and years behind in reading level, that they're not coming out prepared for the workforce. These are huge issues to the to the entire community. So a lot of it being academic performance.
When you are talking with these parents and they're telling you kind of about their issues, like, what are you hearing from the kids? Do you do you hear from them at all when if you do? Yeah, what what are you hearing from the people who are still in the schools?
Yeah, absolutely. We're hearing about how their teachers are burnt out because they are playing the role of social worker counselor, teacher, babysitter, you know? And that reflects into the classroom. And so we're hearing that. I make sure to listen to to students as much as I possibly can. They want better facilities. They're telling me about their technology that's being torn up and isn't reliable. They're telling me about the bus is too slow, the bus comes late, I get to school twenty five minutes late. I'm concerned for my safety, and I just want more opportunity. Just as much opportunity as, you know, if you live on the northeast side, you cross the street and you're in Westerville, and that kid has way more opportunity than you as far as what's in-house in your school. What's the product that you're getting to help you grow? It's not the same, quite frankly. So.
Oh, and I'm not gonna go into the detail because I'm sure anyone who can find a news article can look up the the history of why there's. Are you probably a decent amount of mistrust, I feel like, with the board now with with some things, especially with CEA, the the union and and the board? And I think obviously kind of the some of the changing of the guard will help with that. But like, from your angle, if you get into that role, like, how do you kind of mend and work to mend that connection with with one, the community, but two, also the union, I assume?
You meet with them consistently. You repair this relationship of animosity that has existed for generations. I witnessed multiple teacher strikes throughout my life. And so you slowly build that trust by really just bringing them into the table. I want to see community advisory boards across different issues. I want to see one related to the budget cuts. If we're gonna have to make these fifty million dollar cuts, let's gather a group of people and there has to be at least a few CEA members at that table to lend their voice to the decision making. It means consistently having the liaison to the board or board committees that represents the voice of not just CEA, but the professional school employees, union members. And so just honestly, listening to them at all. In the school closure process last year, there was a task force that originally had CEA and then for a reason, I'm can't go into all that with the time we have, but they were no longer part of the task force and then they continued the work anyway without them. And we're supposed to make sensible decisions about what schools are gonna close and what aren't. And they suffered huge pushback from that as well. So and then we also just need people on the on the board that understand what it means to work for a living every single day and to really be in that classroom, working with the students, teaching them. I feel like there's not enough education experience on the school board right now. So a lot of that, a lot of that.
For those of people who who might not know, kind of talk about the relationship, like, you don't have to go into like, like, all the the nitty gritty details, but on a high level, the relationship between CEA, and what is CEA, and the school board?
Yeah, CEA is the Columbus Education Association. They are a labor union that represents teachers in the Columbus City School District. And in order to work as teachers in the school district, they make a contract with the Columbus City School Board. So this is not with the superintendent. This is not with the principals of their school. It's the board's responsibility to negotiate with the unions and develop a fair contract for their labor. The schools can't run without being staffed by those people who are represented by the union. And so that relationship has always been, you know, as a board, we're broke, we're suffering, we need to make cuts here and there. We can't give you as much of a raise as you deserve. Sorry, it's not happening. Or we need to cut a bunch of positions, or, you know, we can't spend this much time on professional development because our kids are behind. And so we need board members who are who are willing to hear those needs and and offer them what it is that that they need because we trust them with our kids and they do the hard work every day. And most of the board has not been in that position. So that's very, very, very basic summary of what they do together. Yeah.
As someone who's been in the schools and I assume talking with the teachers and I assume you talk with teachers as well, and and as you're campaigning, what do you hear from them? Because I assume it's gonna be kind of in that same breath of, you know, doing more with less burnout, all that. Is that kind of along along those lines?
Totally. Yeah. And it's also, like you mentioned, the lack of trust and accountability of board leadership. The lack of community engagement that they have, that's like a hot button issue. If you interview other candidates, they're gonna talk about community engagement. And it's also just the lack of support staff that they have. Again, you know, in the corporate world, we talk about wearing many hats as a strength to advance your career. But these teachers are wearing unlimited hats. I mean, and the kids in our district have very tough circumstances at home that come to school with them. And they should have somebody who's qualified and dedicated to doing that work to support them and teachers. And so they're telling me a lot about having to console and counsel their kids, and they do a great job of it, but they shouldn't have to. And they're talking about, you know, special education being a huge issue. Whether we're not in compliance with regulations, we have kids being shipped off to different schools every year. We have kids that are deaf being in the same classroom as a kid with multiple disabilities that uses a wheelchair, and they just don't have the same academic needs. And, you know, the special education piece is also a huge part of what teachers share with me, too.
Yeah. Can you elaborate a little bit on that when you say the special education piece and not meeting the standards? So can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So special education, there are different, there are dedicated educators who specialize in special education. And there are also different communities of people that live with different disabilities. And so different sites in the Columbus City School District will take different students in different categories, if that makes sense. And there are teachers, like I have a friend that I grew up with, who's now a special education teacher at the middle school level. And he's got, you know, thirty five kids in the classroom that all need his attention, that all need specific routes of learning. And you can't just, you know, you're one person. You can't teach thirty five different ways at the same time. And so I've heard a lot of issues about not being in compliance with providing them the services that they need in a timely manner or at all in these buildings. And it's not their fault. There's there's not been enough allocation of resources for that.
My wife's mom, my mother-in-law, I should say, is a teacher down in a county in southern, southern Ohio. And just the things that being in a much more rural area too, and she sees a lot of similar things that we do in kind of an urban center. And it's just continues to just breaks my heart to hear all the stuff that they have to go and just seeing the things that she does. And she's so thankfully who has the resources to be able to buy these things for her class or be able to do that sort of thing to be able to give that extra layer, but just the amount, it's just, it's just as shocking to me, just the amount that they put on teachers to to do that. I think, right, side point there, I just need to shout out in the good graces of mother-in-law.
Shout out to mother-in-law.
Let's say you get elected. Those first couple months, in your mind, what does that look like?
Yeah, that first couple months is meeting with as many different parts of how the district runs as possible. It means meeting with special education leadership and educators. It means going to as many of the buildings as you possibly can to assess their conditions and learn more about how they're doing. It means training to be able to do the job, which I've been doing over the course of over a year now. But just learning the ins and outs of what does it mean to be part of this board leadership? And just going everywhere that you possibly can to hear what is it that you need? What is it that isn't working for you? And then it's also establishing those groups based out of community to help us lead through the issues that we have. We know we're gonna be dealing with budget cuts. We know that we have transportation issues that we need to overhaul. And so is it developing the Franklinton Area Commission's Liaison on Education? Things like that to reach out to our people and make sure that as we navigate a crisis that we are managing it with the community's needs first.
No, I want to be knowledgeable of your tone because I know we don't have, we don't have an eternity here.
Totally fine. I'm chilling.
There's a a few other questions I kind of want to hit on and then I want to ask you, of course, the 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 final two.
Fun stuff.
That we always ask on the pod. So you mentioned, like, you know, when you guys, like, like, when you guys get in there, whoever this group is, you're going to be. It sounds like a better words, walking into kind of a bit of a fire.
Yes, yep.
And and you mentioned, like, putting together those groups, like, what actionable things from that? I I guess you can't really predict the future, so it's kind of hard to to say that out. But what do you expect to be the the big thing? Obviously, transportation. But what do you expect some of those big things to be in that first, let's say, year that you guys have to tackle? And then is there a light, like, what is kind of two questions to say this, but is there like a light? Or is it just continuously these cuts are going to happen and you're going to see more consolidation and more consolidation? I don't know. Floor is yours. Go for it.
I want to start by saying one thing that makes me unique in comparison to other candidates is I understand that we need to make cuts here and there, but I also have a growth mindset. I'm also simultaneously thinking of, how can we grow the district? How can we look at what's working right now? Because there are things that are working. And what can we leverage to help us grow at the same time as we're managing? We can't just be constantly crisis management every single cycle. That's not sustainable and it's not how you run a district. And it's why back in the nineties, we had a hundred thousand students and now we have forty seven thousand, even though the city has grown exponentially. And so, you know, that's that's something I just wanted to say. There is a light at the end of the tunnel if we think of it that way. If we think of we have a a future and a potential and we are growing and we are able to get kids back here. And so day one, I mean, it's it's making sure that I communicate to the administration. Here I am. This is what I'm ready for. You know, I expect first of all, to have the data, to have the understanding of what needs to be done, what programs are working. How do we assess the effectiveness in the future? Are we communicating that to the community? I know I'm kind of rambling at this point, but like, I recently got into fishing when I was on a lake trip. And we were looking at like the water quality because we were like, oh, this doesn't look too good. And we went on the Ohio Natural Resources website and every week they're updating the community on like, this water's safe, you know, this is blah, blah, blah. And we can do the same thing with schools of what's the chronic absenteeism rate as of January twenty twenty six? What is the reading proficiency level outside of statewide testing as of March twenty twenty six and just consistently update the people on how we're doing? We have people here that are super excited about data and are working on that. But I want to make sure that we're assessing and that we're we're sharing how we're doing with the community and then making our decisions from from there.
Yeah. So maybe we'll end on a maybe more brighter note before we we ask the final questions. What are some of the things you think are being done just amazing right now in the school system?
Yeah, we have amazing teachers. We have people that have a lot to carry and and do the best that they can and do some beautiful things in the classroom every day. We have rich diversity. We have over a hundred languages that are spoken in these classrooms every day. And I think that's an amazing thing to to grow up around. We have incredible arts. We have incredible relationships with art organizations in Columbus that help us grow our creativity as a city. And we know this is a great place to be to be an artist. We have incredible communities that are built across neighborhoods. And I envision a district where, no matter what neighborhood you're in, you have a school that's a great place to call home, that can give you the best possible education. And that's a great place to work as well for someone in in the career field. And I want that across neighborhoods. And I think that's something that we do have here is rich communities with a lot of history, south side, east side, Franklinton, where we are right now. And I think that's that's such a great thing.
When you look towards the future of Columbus, what excites you? What concerns you?
Yeah. What concerns me is affordability and, you know, people coming here from out of state. That's great. It's awesome. But as we grow so much, we need to make sure we have enough housing and we're we're affordable for for new folks coming here. What excites me is the growth again and the the opportunity. This whole area, when I was a kid, was a parking lot and abandoned used car dealership. And now we have, you know, a thriving community of artists and a beautiful place that just was not here twenty years ago. And I mean, there were communities around around here that are very historic, but some of these areas are just being totally revitalized and it looks great. And, you know, it's super exciting to to be here. So for the future, love that.
In Columbus, your favorite places to eat, drink, hang out?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if you know this, but I'm a huge foodie and I'm a little bit of a chef. So I'm constantly looking for the best places to to go. I'm sure that someone has mentioned Joyas to you. I love Joyas. It's in Worthington, not the city of Columbus, but Joyas is incredible. I love Club One Eighty Five. It's one of the last affordable places left. I love, I like it like that, which is in Grandview. It's super small, intimate. It's inside of Natalie's Pizza. Super cool spots and Yemeni Restaurant on Cleveland Avenue. So good, super authentic experience. Oh, my gosh, I could go on and on and on. There's just some some truly amazing food here, some really smart cooking that's going on. Big fan of BJ that you had on the show earlier. I'm sad sad at the departure of Chapman's. That was a favorite spot for me. But thank heavens, they leaked their Boudino recipe and I can copy that every now and then and not pretend it's my own, but.
Final final plug, anything you want to say, floor is yours. Where could people find you?
Mooneer for Schools, M O U N I R for schools dot com. It's our website. I encourage you to to learn about this election. There's a really hot city council race going on, but our race isn't getting so much attention. And these are our schools. These are our futures. So I encourage you to to join our campaign, mooneerforschools.com. And these are our schools. These are our futures. So I encourage you to, to join our campaign, moonirforschools.com. Moonirforschools on every social media possible. Um, chip in what you can to support our grassroots campaign. You know, we've raised thousands and thousands of dollars with an average of 30 bucks a person. Uh, and just, uh, get out there and stand up for education because it is all of our futures at stake.
Munir, thanks so much for coming on.
Hey, thanks for having me.